I know oftentimes when you say, oh, you're adding personnel, you're increasing taxes is. Well, this is a separate, you know, keeping those two business accounts separate from your general operating budget, which would be tax funded versus rate payer funded.
Yep. Let's see, engineering, no significant changes in engineering, other than Mike's a victim of both the. Windows ten and the rain, not the REM thing though, just the Windows ten thing, so he needs a new station. Fire and rescue, this one's significant. There's a number of items, one of them, and I've listed them there in your memo, but we have a replacement of, I believe, the chassis. Of Squad ninety-nine, that's one of our ambulances. So essentially, take a box, lift it up, put a new chassis underneath and drop it back down. That's a three hundred thousand dollar project to get that new chassis. Seventy-five thousand of that will be covered by a grant that the fire department was able to secure. What?
Rule board.
Yep, and then. We have a significant number of other ones, most of them are related to the striker power cut systems. Life pack monitors and also the striker stair chair. I know John's here, so he can speak to some of this equipment, I did sit down with Chief Mifflin and kind of go through this, talk about prioritization. But essentially, a lot of this equipment, we continue to understand, all of these things relate to EMS. Both Squad ninety-nine and all of these amenities are all EMS based.
And the Kubota is too.
And so, our significant increase in call volume is all EMS. We continue to see EMS calls, and so to get on the front of that, Chief Mifflin wanted to make sure that we have up to date. Equipment within our capacity to utilize this and also to reduce wear and tear and strain on the volunteers. A lot of these systems are designed to be. It's not like the old thing where we're picking up a cot, my hand, and everybody's just running off with it and carrying it away. These are systems that are designed also for the care of the patient, but also for the safety of the volunteers involved in it, to reduce wear and tear. Reduce workers' comp claims and things like that, so.
And we did come up with a number, how we want to categorize. Number one is the squad. Number two is the striker products, all of them. But number three is the Kubota. But then in the end, the Kubota is gonna be a necessity for the trails and the expansion, to have the tool to do the job when we're needing it, so. And then, we also have charging for calls, we got over a million dollars in there now, and that was supposed to. Sub, the sub, we're supposed, that's supposed to sub the cost of doing what we're doing now. So, that's where, I, I wanted to speak to that, that, that was why we went for charging for calls, to subsidize that. So, that would break it, that would basically take us down, we're at a half a million dollars, a little like five fourteen, but. So we would be using half of the charging for calls, and there's some sinking fund money too.
Does that sink fund money, that's also for equipment, so. We can go through when we get down to that last page and talk about how we broke that out, but that's some of the increases in fire. Golf, we continue to see growth in golf, both in membership and green sea users, we've talked about this before, when we look at annual rates out there. The one significant change that we are making at this time in this recommendation, this is our other positional change. Is we are gonna convert what's more than a seasonal part-time position that works for the grounds crew, working with Dan. We're gonna convert that into a full-time position and move away from the part-time position. That person would then be an understudy to Dan, when all the systems and the grounds functions out there to allow and alleviate. Dan, unlike Cody, doesn't leave in the winter, so he doesn't. Aggregate all those hours together like Cody does and then takes that off, he works all year round. And so, we need to make sure that we have a proper balance there, and the other one is. Dan's our more senior person out there, so we also need to start working on any potential for. You know, transition.
Succession.
Succession planning, and so by having an understudy and then somebody that can work full-time out there. You can feel comfortable saying, hey, I'm gonna be out this weekend, you're gonna go do all the grounds work on Saturday morning, get all the greens done, move the cups. Fix irrigation issues that we're having, that they're reported that morning when sprinklers go off and do all these different things that. None of the part-time staff out there know how to do right now, we're subsidizing a little of that with some people from other departments. But Dan needs somebody that he can have there all the time to know how to do that. In the winter, when this person's with us, we'll have him do the same sort of winter work that we have Dan, to help on interior buildings, not just the shop, but anywhere. But Dan is also a jack of all trades, we utilize Dan to look at the ball fields and the grass and the turf out there, help with. Whatever, all hands on deck situations, you know, Dan's doing that, this person would do the same, that would be the same expectation. But I think it would significantly ease some of the pressure that's out there and also have somebody else that's very functional in the work that's going on there. Cause it's pretty technical, Dan's done a great job on the course, and we always hear from people that we have a really quality course out on. Out on the greens and out on the fairways, so we wanna keep it that way. So that's that one. Levy, we continue to work, Derek, myself, Mike Onaby, Bob Myers, we continue to work with HDR. We had the, basically the ninety percent design plans for the update to the levy pump station. It's approximately a little north of four million dollars to do that increase, so we are going to apply for another hazard mitigation grant. Or a phase two that Derek's working on and see if we can cover significant costs on that. Again, way back when, when we first started on this, I think it was like a million dollars, and the. And this is all, these are all general funds, property tax, there's no, we don't have a revenue source to pay for the levy. So, we gotta make sure we're, we're digging under every rock to see if we can secure funds to help do this. Yeah, this is also an element of our levy accreditation process that we need to get finished up. Library, no significant changes there, parks and rec. The turf project is kind of pivoted, and there'll be more that rolls out on that, and so we're gonna. Probably sit back and look at what the school district does with their bond issue, that they're already gearing up, having little group meetings and little startups, having some public education on that. As the middle school bond rolls off this next year, they'll gear up another potential bond vote, depending on the outcome of that. Will give us some direction on where the turf project goes and the improvements to the Legion field and other facilities. And then from that, we'll get our directions of where we're going with the turf project. Or, or just amenities that we're, wanna help out on, whether that's concession, ADA bathrooms, those kind of facilities. Planning and zoning, nothing specific there, police. Basically, business as usual, upgraded equipments for tasers and radars, buying, we buy a new vehicle every year. That's just the rotation to try and keep the budget as flat as possible versus highs and lows, cause of vehicles on and off. Usually, they last us about five years, we have that many in rotation, so we just rotate one vehicle every year, so, we've done that for a number of years now. Recycling, all say, we talked a lot about recycling the last few years, or the last few meetings. And we're looking to go potentially to a, a roll-off system, so that we can take care of that in bankman and kind of. Reduce those employee costs and things like that, and hopefully reduce the amount of out-of-town people coming in and dumping all their recycling on us. I will say this though, me and Bob Myers did the analysis of this, there's almost no dollar-for-dollar change. In the cost to operate a roll-off system versus the manned one we have now. Because of the significant cost for disposal pickup, I mean, we ran all the numbers from your EB. That's the only concerning one there, I will note that, it's, it's almost exactly verbatim the same cost, amazingly enough.
Now, going to cost, one thing we do have backing, cause we increased the dump support to fifty percent. Credit it back, so that will be huge for right now.
Yes.
As, as funds are available, we will back the cities within Seward Saline fifty percent on cost.
So the reimbursement we get right now, the only bills we're sending are the disposal bills of our recyclables, those tend to be. Three or four thousand a year, most of our cost is in the employee and the operations of the recycling center. This would convert all of our costs to disposal and recycling. Paying for those units and things like that, which other communities utilize as a recoupable expense, and so. We'll file for those and see if they reimburse us that fifty percent until they change it back and go, yeah, Seward's eating all the money. So, that's a potential, it's something to continue to watch, we also have that discussion, as we talked about before. That's also a service that is offered in the city of Seward by our commercial hardware. So, if we, for some reason cease doing it, at least somebody else would be able to pick it up for the users that do wanna do it, but. I just noted, there's no significant increase, the, the best thing we'll get is the, the fifty percent reimbursement. The other one is, we're not having such a massive expense in reshaping that retaining wall that's behind it, that's kind of. Falling into the recycling center, gonna cause houses over there to slide down the hill soon, if we don't get on top of that. Senior Center, biggest one is just the flooring project. And the sewer project that's related to it is upgrading the sanitary sewer line to the main there. Brandon Cole, working with Katrina, identified a number of flat spots in there over time, and stuff is just settling in those, and that's what's causing some of the baggage issues. So she'll have that, street, we've already talked about the one and six here plan, the biggest one for next year is Hillcrest from East Ridge down to the. Plum Creek Bridge, that will be the significant project that we'll undertake, and then the bridge project will be approximately around that one, but that'll be dictated by the state. So, hopefully that's our only big project next year, cause I wanna roll some of these projects off and not have seventeen of them going all at once. Tiff, no significant changes, our normal tiff estimates and what we're doing with that. Wastewater, we have a three percent rate increase after all of our significant increases. Likely what we'll do is we'll monitor that, look at revenues, and then make a final recommendation as we move into the full fifty million dollar funding. So right now, we're at the thirty-eight, so we're fine, this covers maintenance expenses, inflationary costs. We'll come back with a final rate recommendation if we, when we move to the fifty-one million for the full asking, that might be in a year, so. We'll continue to monitor that, but we have secured the funds from the state involving a lot of them, from the new wastewater treatment plant. And those plans will probably go out late this fall, after the final redesign here, forbid. Water, water also, as, as NMPP recommended, has a three percent rate increase, the biggest one here. Is gonna be closing out the water tower project, that's our big one, we have a few main replacement projects, but the biggest one is doing that. If you've seen lately, we have a logo on the, the, there. A lot of the stuff that's up there is like testing and, and trying to determine site graphics and sightlines and things like that, but. As soon as the full paint arrives, Jim, our, our artiste will be off and running. I know that Mike Onaby and Brandon and Seth Boggs have been down there meeting with them multiple times and. Making recommendations and talking about different sightlines and things, so, but pretty excited to get that one done. And then, get our tower equipment moved over and then get the demo started on the old one. Wellness Center, again, next year, we'll see the first probably distribution from the gift given by. The Joan Cruzey Rogers, and so that will significantly increase revenues for. The operational side, which will help, most likely, once we get settled into that and see kind of what that's generating. That will move some of that revenue that's generated from fees and things like that into more of a reserve fund or sinking fund or something later. To start building up capital for either replacements or other phases of the project. We already talked about the pool thing that's noted in here, and then the last one would be just getting a feel through the entire school year. About the before and after school care, we still have a significant portion of the day where that room sits dormant during school time. And so the discussion we had was, is at some point, do we take a look at offering, if there's a community need for it. A, like a morning and afternoon preschool in that room as well, cause we have all the stuff for it, it's, it's built and set up. In the appropriate way to, to do those offerings as well, if there's a community need, and we can utilize the wellness center to fill a community need that's not being filled. I think we should take a look at it, but that will be for another, probably next school year kind of thing to take a look at for Sam and Joel out there, so. And then lastly, we have the airport authority on there, so, again. Keeping their, their levy current as, as before, so. Any questions before we get into kind of the general CIP items, general fund budget deficit situation? Alright, so this will be the last one, and this just lists the different general fund departments and items that we identified in there in the ask, and then working with department heads. Things that we think are not. We wouldn't cease function if we did not perform these upgrades or buy these items or make these improvements, and so we've listed all of them, and then. Any of them that are listed without a status, those are included in your budget, and you would have seen that in CIP and the budget document. The ones that have various things that were impacted are on there, and so one was asphalting the North Cemetery. We felt like the water line was more important than, we can get by another year with a gravel road, but we'll be fine up there. But if the water, if we don't have water out there, then those guys can't go to the bathroom or anything, like, have to go find somewhere else to go. So, we think that one is a little bit more significant. Golf, right now, we have gutters and softits, this is kind of a, the building is showing its wear out there. It is in need of some TLC, this could be one to put back in, but. To make sure that we were looking kind of at all corners and what was the least of the things needed out there. And what has an impact on play versus what happens, an impact on aesthetic. You could probably swap some things around. But that was the item that was removed from golf at the moment. The sidewalk at Plum Creek Park, this kind of needs an explanation. So if you go up to the intersection of Rainbow, where the, the current bike trail comes down into Plum Creek Park at Rainbow and Pine Wood. It comes down at a weird angle behind Legion feet, and then it turns at a very odd angle into the bridge.
Very sharp.
Yes.
On a bike, it's hard to navigate.
Well, some people, I don't know that think it's there, and they think that the trail must just continue down into the creek, cause we've heard of at least two or three. People just going right down into it, and so one of the discussions, I think it was more in thinking of, in terms of that master planning and the turf project, so. This is one we've kind of pulled back on, but looking at different ways to realign that situation there to kind of. Make it safer or alleviate that issue. But again, it was of, of some of the other ones that we have on there. I would tell you, we have significantly more injuries at the fourplex behind those fields. From grandmas and grandpas coming out to hang out and watch their grandkids play baseball and softball, and all those river rocks. That are right behind the stands, just rolling ankles left and right, it is a significant danger, and so if you wanna talk about. Which one we have more issue with, it's technically the fourplex one, we've already replaced two fields worth. We, if you, if you give us a choice, I would say that one's a bigger safety concern. But we did remove the adjustment of the sidewalk at Plum Creek Park. That one also needs a little bit of, I don't wanna say thinking, but that's really what it is, is some engineering ideas. Because you would have to realign and redo a bridge or covert it or, or do something. Cause you can't just fully straighten it out and utilize the same bridge, cause the bridge is the angle you have to get to, so.
But you gotta consider, they were major ones that had, when they had the wrecks with the bikes.
We could put a big old stop sign.
Maybe a small one.
Walk, walks out.
Flashing light.
We could put a railing, so at least run into that, I don't know. It, it, something to think about there, and then the last one is in the police department, again, the storage shed. This item has been, you've seen it in previous years, again, just going back to the idea of we continue to have amenities and items that are kind of held up in the hallways and things like that. But, trying to. Kind of look at holistically everything that's in the budget and try to take some of the little things that, cause everybody's not just getting everything, so. But any, I, I feel like any of those things, if, if you're looking for stuff to try and reduce budget, these are the things that you would look at. Obviously, you guys can look anywhere, so if you wanna say, don't buy new computers, we won't buy new computers, but we wanna give you a, a, a listing of things that are included in there. That I don't think we would all fall on the table and start crying if we didn't do, but they are needed, yeah, there's safety issues, there are equipment replacement ones. Can I answer any questions? Again, with what you see there, the general fund budget. Is run at no deficit other than the hundred thousand that is being pulled from the sinking fund. The sinking fund is where we charge an expensive, and we put money away for the fire department. That rolls as an expense, and then when we finally pull cash out of it, so, a hundred thousand of that is proposed out of the sinking fund. To help expend for all of those pieces of equipment.
And my other question would be, will there be any pushback on charging for callment? To pay for the, the extra equipment?
Oh, from this body or?
I'm just saying, is, there shouldn't be any issue, right, in the general funds?
No, so as you see the proposals there, a hundred thousand, cause if you total these out, it's just, I believe, north of four hundred thousand for all the fire equipment?
Actually, it came up five hundred, but you figure the hundred out, the seventy-five out, and then that would be, yeah, you would be right, but the total was like five fourteen.
We're proposing a hu- what?
I had totals four thirty-six.
Yeah, I thought it was just north of four hundred, so we basically said a hundred thousand, that would come from the billing fund, a hundred thousand from the sinking fund, and the rest would come from the general fund. So, still leaving north of eight hundred thousand in the current cash reserves just for equipment.
Which, charging for calls is actually working to offset.
And there would be some bigger expenses coming down.
Yeah.
The five dollar, and so it's, it's not like, you know, it's a lot, you may, you may think it was a lot of money still in that fund than there is, but it's going to get eaten up. By any large capital expense, cause the new, a new rig, things like that are pretty expensive and they have to, you know, you could take a number of years. Like other large equipment that's customized to, to actually get here, and so, that's why we do this planning ahead of time, like, why do we worry about something? That's three years down the road or longer, well, it's cause it takes that long for those things to get built and get here, and so.
Yeah.
That's why the planning portion of this is so important.
We have a big expense coming in front of us in, in the next few years, and that would be ladder trucking. You can't buy a new ladder truck for under a million dollars, or you refurbish, so there's, that is coming at us, so it's just something to think about. The, this, this is an FYI, the striker stuff is for the safety of the people who are on rescue calls. It, it, it really is, it, having the lifts now, even at my age, you know, and sometimes we're short during the day on calls, and it does save facts. The same, same way with the stair chair, when you're going down steps, it, it rolls with the step, it's, it's automated, so it rolls right with the step down. And has brakes on it, so you don't have to go every step to every step to every step, so. Things that, for technology and the safety of the volunteers.
And, and John, can you talk, the customer singles, can you talk a little bit about the life pack monitors and where Seward stands in relation to other kind of communities with those monitors and their squads?
We're, we're actually behind, and this will get us, what are you gonna say, what are you gonna say, more into the technology side, which we need to do.
Cause we, we've never had those.
No, no, this will be something new. That medical service, like the, the hospital and that, and our ER doctor is pushing, you know, to have this technology, so.
Would you say that this is more of a standard?
Yeah, yeah, it, it is, it, it's, to, to his point, you know, on that, it's just, we've not updated. We're getting to that point, we, we, we're have to.
And that's one of the reasons why we went to the initial charging for calls, I know there's some initial resistance, because it was something new that hadn't been done before, and, and a lot of volunteers. Had lots of questions, but, you know, these are the kinds of expenses that makes sense that moving forward, that, that, you know, to help pay for that, cause. The technology is great, it's never cheap, and, and you have to always keep up to date with it.
Same way that, where they whip the Kubota, it's not a toy, it, it gets utilized significantly, especially when we're having city functions. Like Fourth of July, that is used dramatically to get around, and with the trail and everything. It has paid for itself a lot, cause you can't get big rigs down the trail.
Speaking of trail, those posts are the other things you need to look at for safety, the posts on the end.
We get rid of them?
The old, you know, the reason why we put them in there is to sort.
Or move them or make them wider, something, cause with bikes, if you're coming through there. It's, it's really, they're very dangerous if there's more than one rider.
Wider wouldn't be bad, and they are removable, but wider wouldn't be bad.
Something.
So you wouldn't have somebody drive down with an automobile, that's.
Yeah, I, I, I understand why they're wider. It's just hard to navigate if, if you approach those and you're on a bike and there's more than one rider, especially if anybody else is on the trail.
And you might have somebody with a removable bike someday that might complain, I, I have no problem with that either, that'd be something to consider.
Okay, let me take a look at it. We'll talk to Bob Corr, Mike Onaby, the senior engineer, good, I can't speak to, I know the purpose for sure is off, one, to keep automated vehicles off it. But it also may be to slow riders down to take precautions before they cross streets, but we'll follow up with that, so.
It's a big, really sharp turn, that way they can't make it, and then no wreck on the trail, like by the bridge.
No wrecking.
But if you put the net like.
I thought we were just fibbing, I thought there were no bad ideas, I'm sorry.
Can you talk a little bit about the pond hole number four, the golf course? I guess, what is that, I know that one's probably more aesthetic, but what, what is all?
Uh, it's not exactly aesthetic, so originally, we did pond, the pond between eight and nine. That one was done by an outside firm to give Dan and the staff an opportunity to kind of see how it's done, but essentially, it's dredging and reforming that. Both for obviously aesthetic purposes and play, but also for stormwater purposes. And so, Dan was able to kind of observe that process and be a part of it and was able to replicate it, I believe on five. And so we had a pretty significant project that, that crew undertook during the offseason to, to undertake the changes to five. This will give Dan an opportunity to do that on four, which is probably the one that needs the most. To realign the drainage.
It's expanded so much, it's just.
And to help with getting stormwater to pass through there properly, and then properly dissipate it onto the drainage and the ditch that continues on around down towards the river. And so, it's a stormwater improvement along with an aesthetic improvement, and again, the fact that Dan and his, and Bob Corr's crew can do it now versus paying somebody else. This is probably, it might be a third of what the cost is in regards to, cause this is bigger than eight. And I think it costs us like ninety thousand to do eight. And so I'm guessing it'd be like a hundred and fifty to do four, so. Again, if we didn't do it, would it ruin golf? No, I'd still lose balls one way or the other in that, cause I'm terrible. But, it needs to be done at some point as we continue to progress, and as we continue to focus on the wood property in the long term. Because this drainage drains right into that, we kind of solved the problem to the north on their property as it goes through the farm field, north of the dugolf course. To some extent, but we have to pass it through the golf course and get it out in an orderly manner as well. So that's the purpose of it, again, if we don't do it, does it, in the world of golf, we just shut the golf course down, no. But at some point, we'll have to address it, cause it's continuing to erode away, silt itself in. If you go down there during a storm event, it looks like chocolate milk is shooting all over the golf course, cause it's bright and green. And all the water that comes down into there is just brown as can be, and that sediment coming in and settling inside of our storm.
It used to be a lot deeper than it is now, you can see fish is sitting there now.
But you've got all the, all the runoff from the, from the east side, all runs through there, so.
Right, and then.
It will need to be cleared out.
And kind of a pivot along the same line of thought, so the gutter softits, that, those are on the clubhouse?
Yep, and I don't believe those have been, Ike, Megan could probably tell us better than any of us could know how long ago they ever renovated that's. Outside of that building, that might be the original, after it burnt down.
After it burned down.
And so.
As, as we continue to try to enhance like the golf experience.
Oh, no, it wasn't the ninety, it was the eighty.
As we try to enhance the golf experience, you know, part of that is utilizing the, utilizing that patio space on balcony. It's not very, it's been neglected over the years, and there's speakers that no one's sure what they're wired to, and there's lights that they're not sure where those. How to turn them on, it's just gotten antiquated, so it'd be nice to kind of clean that space and make it a little bit more welcoming as we continue to improve the, the golf experience. Not just on the course, but in the clubhouse.
But those, I guess those gutter softits, they're not at a point where they'll necessarily fail if it's not addressed this year, causing. But those, I guess those gutter soffits, they're not at a point where they'll necessarily fail if it's not addressed this year, causing issues at the clubhouse?
It it's gonna be an immediate address at some point here in the next year or two, it it may push its own, I mean, one of the significant ones we made was adjusting, I think it, did it used to have a tile roof? So changing it to an asphalt shingle roof or a shingled roof significantly helped, and it made it not a giant wassiness, but um that hasn't bought us a ton of time in regards, and the weather is, as you well know, out there is brutal, and so uh it's seeing its share of wear and tear um from the elements being forty years old.
I think if the building was being utilized more, if the restaurant was open and everything, I think I'd feel more comfortable keeping it on the list to have it fixed, but I mean, the clubhouse isn't used nearly the way that it used to be, so it makes it hard to justify that.
Well, we might have a discussion about that here shortly, so.
I would love it.
Things things floating around, but until they solidify more, and the hard part is, is that again, we're approaching the end of the season. It's not the opportune time to start opening up a restaurant out there at the moment, so.
But this would be the time you'd want to make those improvements once, before the next heat can start, so.
Other items, Rich?
I wanted to just pivot again, sorry. The the R O plant, you know, the third skid's now up and operational, um outstanding work by Brian Cole. Uh both Councilman Streisand and myself had sat in on a lot of Zoom meetings between the engineers and the suppliers and people from all over the country, were uh shipping us actuator valves and so forth, we got tours of the plant as the installation was happening. Um they even had to move the support on one of the walls to the facility on the west wall because it was sitting too close to the apparatus, so. All the engineering and the and the demolition for that, that happened on schedule, as soon as the um skid was up and running, the filtering process worked exactly as designed, uh the new operational system is working well, and um I was really pleased that everything fell into place just before the dairy processing groundbreaking, so the 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 capacity of the R O plant is going to be um in line with what the needs are going to be for the citizens of Seward, so. So Councilman Streisand and myself had had a a chance to input some information on behalf of our group, and a lot of times, um they were very interested in in how Seward is moving along, and and other communities are looking at that same R O process for um cleansing their water, so. I just wanted to bring that to your attention, because that wrapped up, and I did notice in the budget that the uh the ability for that plant to operate fully is is part of the budget for next year, so.
And I would note in the water, I'm checking the C I P now, but I believe there is money included in there for a let me look here. Skated improvements, water system studying including R O plant is scheduled in for year one next year. That that building is maxed out.
It is.
So whatever the next step is, the next growth of Seward that needs to utilize more R O processing, you gotta have a bigger plan.
Gonna start over.
Yes.
New process.
Again, we continue also look at our wells, um I think some of our older wells are aging, so just having that discussion, continuing to balance those two aquifers we're tapped into now. Just a lot of things to look at, and also go back and look at just the agingness of our in-ground distribution system for for water. I think we've handled the towers well, I think the next tower discussion will be well down the line, probably out of our, but we know roughly where it should go in regards to proximities, but um when you'll need to tackle it is probably beyond our capacity.
Yeah.
So. Yeah, I will note, um and I want to commend uh Finance Director Sydney Golden, she's here tonight, she's not had to say much, but I want to thank her for all her work. Um grabbing uh the bull by the horns on a lot of things, especially with tsunami vacations and uh storm events and all kinds of other things, again, sincere apologies for the delay in getting this out, this is not our normal timeframe, I still think we have a great public opportunity to sort through these issues, and a lot of great work was done by the department heads in Sydney ahead of time to get us to this point, I commend Mayor Ickmeyer, that was a heck of a late night we had going through all this stuff together, but uh he got it through to give out his final proposal. Uh one of the other things that's in here that I wanted to note is um in regards to cash reserves, and all of the funds except the street fund, because we always like the street fund to try and get as close to zero as we can. Because it's just being supplemented by the, we take money from the general fund and slide it over along with its own revenues. Um all of them meet, it means uh Sydney went through this, all of them meet my basic requirement for cash reserves, I know we don't have a cash reserve policy that's formal, and the measures are different by our auditors versus N P P versus us, but my cash reserve policy is six months O and M, so operating and maintenance costs plus debt service, so that we can make sure we pay our debts that we own. Uh and in the electric fund, we don't count power purchase, because power purchase is just a pass-through. We're being paid by our ratepayers, we're passing the money back to N P P D, our wholesale power provider, so we just totally wiped that off, and we just look at that O and M side. Um and we have significant or sufficient cash reserves in every single fund, the general fund, the water fund, wastewater fund, and the electric fund. So they meet that standard, so.
Any other questions or comments from the council? It's not a public hearing, but from the public, we should comment on this end. Look at you, you're.
Sydney, anything to add? Is that a good summation of all the stuff we've done for like last six months? Uh again, just thank you to everybody that was involved in the process, in two weeks, we'll have the formal public hearing. We won't adopt the budget at that time, but it will have all the motions that night, which we'll just table those to likely the twenty-third. And if anything significant comes of any of those public hearings or anything else, then we'll make adjustments, amendments, or anything else, and then formal adoption tentatively the twenty-third after the pink postcard hearing, which is required by the proposed budget, and then if we're still poking around, some things are unresolved, we can move to that thirtieth on the thirtieth, we gotta approve it that morning, because Sydney and the auditors have to send it off that day to the state. Here we go.
Any deals?
Yep.
Do you have any action on one A?
I don't believe we have any motions based on what I've heard.
So we're good on one A? All right, item number two then, consideration of an engagement letter with Gilmore and Bell to provide disclosure compliance services for a five-year term beginning September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
I'll take this one, even though we wrote Sydney on there for some reason, so, this is just our uh engagement letter for our budget services. In regards to, oh, no, 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 this is Gilmore and Bell, this is uh just a re-up of our engagement letter with Gilmore and Bell, they provide our bonding. And so this is just an update of terms and services, this is not a guarantee of us utilizing them for any bonds, it's just making sure that our uh we're in compliance, so.
This is the annual, right?
Yep.
This is a five-year term?
Yeah. This is provide disclosure compliance in regards to any of the previous bonds we have, it's not, so.
Any questions or comments, or someone like to make a motion?
Move to approve.
Second. Motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Voting in favor, Francis Cow, Kayla, Tanya, Spolton, Singleton, Streisand, Morgan, seven, zero.
I have three, consideration of a recommendation to award transformer procurement to Gridlink Power Solitech for the industrial substation transformer project.
Jared?
Jared, welcome.
I thought you were just here for the budget.
Yeah.
All these other fun things.
We should have taken care of Jared first, right? Do that for everybody else.
If if he wants, if he wants to get a new employee, he has to sit there.
All right, Sheriff of Tennessee, Seward Electric Superintendent, uh we removed the bids for Seward Industrial Substation Transformer Number Two. Olson did a comprehensive evaluation of bids received from M B A, Wake, Tachi, Gridlink Power, and Howard. And the following determinations were made, um first bid was for Moan Electric for one million two hundred four thousand three hundred dollars, that's not including any taxes. That had a delivery date of seventy-five to eighty weeks. Uh Wake provided a bid with a ten point two twelve or point twelve five mega watt transformer, but the specs were for a ten fourteen mega M B A unit, so they didn't meet the specs in the specs in such weights and specifications, the costs were invalid, so kind of threw that bid out, since it didn't meet the specs that we went out for bids. The next bid was M B A Power of one million four hundred and eighteen thousand two hundred dollars with a lead time of a hundred and three weeks. That did not include taxes, local taxes or city taxes, uh. M B A bid is incomplete of any critical components such as low tap change were not included in the bid, discharged equipment, and other auxiliary items. So these omissions added approximately five hundred thousand to the total cost, and the weight and data, oil data were also inaccurate due to absence of L T C, so. With that five hundred thousand not included, took that bid high. Tachi submitted only a budgetary shipment pricing cost of a plus twenty percent resulting in a higher final cost. Sorry, Tachi's bid was one million four hundred ninety thousand one hundred, no taxes, had a lead time of a hundred twenty-five to hundred twenty-nine weeks. So in their bidding process, they added a cost of twenty percent of total costs upon delivery, resulting in a higher final cost. The highest field service rates and the longest lead time, and the complete A R O technical data not recommended by Olson's. Gridlink Power was fully compliant, Gridlink Power was one million six hundred ninety-three thousand six hundred fifty dollars with a sixty-week lead time and not included taxes. Big was was fully compliant with specifications offered, low losses, competitive lead time, and a complete pricing structure. The only known exception is a liquidated damage limited to three months. And then the next bid was Dunn and Lasens, this was one million seven hundred seventy-one thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars with an eighty-two to eighty-eight weeks. Local taxes. They had numerous exceptions to basic requirements, startup procedures, the multiple request items either omitted, our list is as the A R O. The proposed design does not meet N E M A transformer requirements and is not recommended. So based on the specifications, compliance, technical performance, delivery schedule, and total evaluation costs, Gridlink Power is the most preferred supplier, Olson is recommending the awarding of transformer procurement to Gridlink. And I agree with their recommendation. Questions?
This, where would this transformer go?
It will be out at the rail sub, but existing right next to the south of that one. Basically more for the dairy project and then a little more redundancy, so if they lose one, we can hold it with that sub and the other subs in town. So if the one that needs to be shut down for maintenance or repair has an issue.
And have you used this brand before, this company before?
No.
References?
Yeah, all references were good.
Okay.
Yep.
Where's this company out of?
The transformer company's out of Missouri, but I think it is actually manufactured in overseas, I can tell you that, I don't know if I have it on the sheet.
But they've done, they've done work for utilities in Nebraska?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, I think that was to John's point, that there are.
Yes.
Yeah.
Who was, you know, many that in Nebraska, yourself, that they were?
Um they are included in the bid.
I know.
But I don't.
Yeah, I'm for sure.
Off the top of my head, no.
Okay, just asking.
But part of the review process by Olson, I assume, is checking the references to see what size of of scale they've done projects for that are comparable to this one, and making sure that 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 this is too too much for them to bite off, you know, there would be concerns there. Um if they hadn't done projects in in Nebraska that they could verify, there would be concerns as far as the quality of work, but all those things you are satisfied with based on Olson's review, Jared?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
So they're recommended in there, right?
Yes, Olson is recommended.
Awesome. Any other questions or comments on this one?
Move to approve.
Second. The motion and a second for approval, any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes, please display the votes.
Voting in favor, Francis Cow, Kayla, Tanya, Spolton, Singleton, Streisand, Morgan, seven, zero.
Thanks, Jared.
Thank you.
Item four, consideration of to recommend Ryan, is it Straylo, uh Walmart number eight eight five thirteen twenty-six uh one, I'm sorry, thirteen twenty-six two hundred eightieth as manager of retail plastic liquor license, uh number zero six seven zero one five, um go ahead, Jared.
Uh so basically Walmart changed the liquor license manager, and we have pink in the states, we do when these kind of things happen. Just to approve it or or to recommend a real world it, so that's why we're bringing it here tonight, we just need a simple motion to do so. As we do in the past for these ones, we had the police department check on that person, and they didn't find anything for them to be concerned about. So I'll just recommend that we approve the manager, and then I'll respond to the state and say, yeah, we're good with that, and I'll have a new manager there.
This is very common, as they're required by state law to have a local manager, essentially, the idea is that if there's ever any issue, the State of Patrol Commission can physically reach the person who is on record as the manager, and so when they change managers, they need to update the records, and this is the process that we go through, so. Any questions or comments?
Move to approve.
Second. The motion and a second for approval, any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes, please display the votes.
Voting in favor, Francis Cow, Kayla, Tanya, Spolton, Singleton, Streisand, Morgan, seven, zero.
All right, number five, consideration of a memorandum of understanding between the City of Seward and Dairy Processing LLC regarding Seward Rail Campus Site Readiness.
This one we didn't get done, so, put it on the agenda with high hopes, and it was just me and Kelly, uh with all our, especially me, with all our other stuff going on in regards to storm and budget and those kind of things, this one, so, project keeps going, I think me and Jared secured some agreements on uh localized transformers the other day, which are significant, cost increased, so we continue to keep rolling with them, permits are coming in and all that stuff, we just want to try to make sure we got this thing pinned down, so likely you'll see this one at the next meeting.
So there's no objection, we'll go and table that for tonight? All right, and then we'll move on to the city manager's report.
Um, report's in there, budget a palooza, kind of follow-up items, want to commend Derek for his work on following up on both the March storm and working with N E M A F E M A Now on that one, and also preparing docs and working with the staff to prep for the next one, we hope will be coming, so we can get some reimbursement. At this current time, though, we have not heard any indication that there'll be a federal designation uh at this point on the August storm. Other than that, just chasing all the normal items, but phenomenal budget, is what we're working on the last two weeks.
Any questions or comments for Greg? Although I didn't have a motion to accept.
I moved to accept the report, second.
The motion and a second, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Voting in favor, Francis Cow, Kayla, Tanya, Spolton, Singleton, Streisand, Morgan, seven, zero.
Thank you, any future requests for council adjutants or manager of action?
I will have one.
Sure.
But we'll talk offline.
Okay. Seeing none currently, but anticipated. With that, we'll move on to upcoming events. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, so we got a few upcoming events at the chamber, uh so the first thing is we have a couple ribbon cuttings coming up, we typically do them on the third Wednesday of the month now. So we have a ribbon cutting for Milford Uptown Park, uh Black Hills Energy, and Chardwell on Wednesday, September seventeen. This starts at one thirty P M, and then we'll just kind of be sporadically throughout the day, so we'd love to have people attend us at the ribbon cuttings if we can uh on September nineteenth, and then in the evening, and then into the twentieth, September twentieth, we have the Nebraska Tech Builders Challenge, this is in partnership with Concordia University. It's essentially a twenty-four hour, twenty-four hour hackathon to just kind of help students solve real world problems using technology. And then the chamber has our upcoming. And then the chamber has our upcoming Downtown Sewer Progressive Dinner on Thursday, September twenty-fifth. Tickets are available online on our website or through our office. It'll be engaging lots of downtown businesses. It will all around be a fun time. And then the next day, we are hosting the Connecting in Nebraska's Conference on Friday, September twenty-sixth. We'll be welcoming up to two, one hundred and fifty plus, if not more, young professionals from all across the state for an all-day conference on the Seward Civic Center. And then finally, our next professional development luncheon will be on Thursday, October ninth, and this will be about domestic violence, uh, kind of in Seward County. And then we'll be learning from various resource providers and how to provide support by those impacted by it, so, thank you.
Alright, thank you. Any other strategy sessions for us?
Kelly, do we need it or not?
Nope.
Don't even.
Oh, fantastic.
Just kidding. John, you leave a motion to adjourn?
I will do that.
Motion. And everyone else?
He didn't ask Rich, come on.
Just let everyone go to a senior member.
I know, I know.
Please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Voting in favor, Francisco, Kayla, Tanya, Smith, Wilson, Stretson, Morgan, seven, zero.
Alright, thank you all and have a good night.
Feel good. You know what it is, I'm sure.